Call the meeting back to order, where did Mike go?
He's just covering the [inaudible 00:00:38]. Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council for the quick brief. The second public hearing this evening is a public hearing to consider the approval of a resolution that adopts ordinance 2016-13 amending the zoning ordinance regarding crematoriums, similar in nature to what we had discussed earlier this evening regarding process and the need for the zoning code to be amended to allow for the special use to occur. This special use is with respect to the use of a crematorium operation. John Wallace is looking for the file at this second I see on the screen.
Right.
And will provide the briefing in just a moment.
As Marcus said, this proposed ordinance is very similar in nature to the homeless shelter in that it's dealing with a use that wasn't identified in the zoning ordinance. And much the same way as the strategy was prepared to address the homeless shelter, the same is true of the crematorium issue. The Planning Commission formed a subcommittee who reviewed information on crematorium use, how other cities, states, countries looked at crematoriums and the standards that they put together. Based on that information, made a presentation to the full Planning Commission Board. The Planning Commission Board recommended unanimously the ordinance as proposed. The ordinance, again, looked at the various districts and tried to determine what a most appropriate land use compatibility would be, and determined that the I-1 and the I-2 were the districts that they felt there was the best fit. In so doing, there was a dimensional separation distance of 300 feet, which is proposed as part of the ordinance. So not only would you have to be in the I-1 or the I-2, but you would have to maintain a distance of 300 feet from a residential parcel that might be outside of the industrial district. In addition to that, there are some basic standards which basically look to safeguard general health and safety, asking that appropriate permits be pulled from the state, that appropriate operator's licenses be obtained, and some other standards that basically are customary for that particular business, just to make sure that standards that have become somewhat standard for that industry be followed as they relate to applications within Cadillac for crematorium use. Again, it is being proposed as a special land use permit, so once the ordinance were approved, anybody that wanted to establish one in an acceptable district could then apply for the special land use permit. And the standards in the special land use section, as well as the standards that would be specifically adopted for the crematorium use, would be reviewed and followed in approving such a use in the industrial districts. Again, the Planning Commission recommended the ordinance as proposed on a unanimous vote.
Okay. With that, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Philkins, members of the City Council. My name is Ross Meyerin, and I'm proud owner of Peterson Funeral Home since 1988. Peterson Funeral Home has served the citizens of Cadillac since 1932, and we're only the third family that has had the privilege to do so. We know both of you, we've actually served some of your families, and we counted a privilege to do so. I've been a licensed funeral director for 32 years now. I've seen a lot of changes. I know you're thinking, "Oh, man, he's way too young for that." But I have been licensed for 32 years now, and I've seen many changes in funeral service over the years that I've been licensed. Many years ago, cremation used to be the minority in the arrangements that we used to make with families. Today, cremation rates have risen to be equal to, if not more, than traditional burial rates. And the projections from our state association and our national associations have said that cremation rates are going to increase in the next few years. So today, funeral and cremation arrangements are typically made at the funeral home with the funeral director, and very similar to when we accompany the families of loved ones to the cemetery, we are now having families ask us to have that right to go to the crematory as well. To go to the crematory located in industrial park setting would not only be inconvenient, but unfamiliar and uncomfortable to the families that we're serving. As we presented to the Planning Commission, crematory technology nowadays is bar none, something that is -- it's hard for people to imagine. And we would recommend, the technology that we're looking into, we would recommend that the city should demand operator use for it. No emissions, no odors, no visible anything, no harm to the community, no harm to the neighborhood. Fact is, probably, no one would even know it's there. That's how cremation has evolved over the last several years. I obviously wouldn't even be here today if there were to be any harm to our neighborhood or the community that I serve and that I work in. So there's absolutely, to us, there's absolutely no reason to not allow cremation services in the districts where the two funeral homes in Cadillac are today. To not allow the location of a crematory in the location convenient to the families that are being served by the two funeral homes in Cadillac is a disservice to this community. Other communities across the state of Michigan have crematories conveniently located to funeral homes. Couple good examples is Flat Rock, Michigan, Muskegon, Michigan, both more populated and commercial areas, and then one right up here in northern Michigan, in Beulah, Michigan, of all places, where it's right next door to the funeral home in a smaller community, smaller than ours, actually. The Muskegon situation is very, very similar to ours. We've asked the Planning Commission to look into that, we've talked to them about it, and there are very similar circumstances. And I'll be brief, I know your meeting has been long, so in closing, I just think that there's no reason to impair that convenience to our city residents. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Philkins, City Council members. My name is Jerry Lovell. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Cadillac since September of 1954. I've been actively involved in this community all of my adult life. After 31 years of service with the Sheriff's Office, I have retired. During my years of service, I had the opportunity to interact with the local funeral homes as I was the death investigator for the medical examiner's office. It was during that time that I had the pleasure of dealing with the Meyerin family and their professional funeral and cremation business. My family has had many services performed at Peterson's Funeral Home as well. There are many prearrangements made that are in place at this current time. The thought of a loved one being unnecessarily transported to other areas causes me concern and unwarranted grief. The Meyerins have sufficient additional property at their current site to operate their proposed crematorium. I am certain that their venture will be a very positive impact on the city of Cadillac for current and future needs. The demonstrated trend for final disposition is the cremation alternative. I fully support their desire to adequately serve their clientele at their most grieving time as not to cause any unnecessary convenience or additional expense. I believe it is a great disservice to Cadillac in general to deny their request as they have the ability and the facility to accommodate their expansion. With current modern equipment and stringent EPA standards, any cause for alarm is unnecessary and unwarranted. An opportunity has presented itself to add to what is already a grand historic setting in our city. Built in 1890, somewhere 126 years ago, is the current Peterson Funeral Home. And this funeral home has served the community very well for the last 69 years. With all this being said, it only makes good sense to bring Cadillac in line for advancements for 2017 and beyond. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mike Philiam, any McCurdy, Wotill, and Portius, I represent Meyerin Company LLC. They own the property where the Peterson's funeral home is located and operated. This process that has brought us here tonight was started with a special use permit application that I filed on behalf of the company. We have not, through some sort of policy disagreements that the city and I have, we've not been able to actually get a hearing before the Planning Commission on the special use permit. There is some sense that a use that isn't specifically provided for and conditions enunciated in the ordinance cannot be necessarily subject to the special use permit provisions of our ordinance, which are quite fine and comprehensive, yet here we are. The bottom line from our perspective is that the ordinance as it's been presented here tonight really doesn't recognize modern day and current technology in crematories, doesn't recognize modern day funeral planning. It seems the idea that you would place something that is important, a service that's so important in planning in an industrial park, when the technology essentially allows, when properly operated, no emissions, no discernible odors, it makes no sense to force a family, as has been mentioned, out to the industrial park to, you know, take their planning to whatever extent they want, which is more and more often including cremation. You know, it just doesn't seem like the thinking that's behind the ordinance as presented is really up to where we need to be today. The special use permit provisions of the ordinance that was presented to you only apply to the industrial park. It doesn't apply to the only two districts where the funeral homes are located. Doesn't apply to the only two districts that are convenient, given the funeral homes being located there, to the citizens in their planning. It doesn't recognize, apparently, the technology, which essentially means, as the other speakers have said, you won't even know it's there. This is not a guinea pig sort of proposal that we're making, this is not something new. The Muskegon site that was mentioned is really, really similar to what we have here. It's in a commercial business district, it's very close to residential homes, and it operates fine. It recognizes where we are in 2017. It recognizes the importance of cremation, and more, most importantly, it recognizes the technology that allows the location of a crematory convenient to the rest of the funeral planning and the location of the funeral home in our city. We really don't see any good reason to limit this ordinance and the special use provisions of the proposed ordinance to the industrial park. Apply the conditions, with one exception that I'll talk about, to the B-3 district, which has a funeral home, and the OS-2 district, which has a funeral home. The conditions that were proposed, with the exception of the spatial distance condition that Mr. Wallace talked about, were the same conditions that we would have proposed, and that had we had a chance to have our hearing before our Planning Commission, we would have suggested that those are appropriate conditions for us or anyone who wants to operate a crematory in that district to follow. So with regard to the 300 feet and that spatial requirement, given what was presented at the Planning Commission in terms of the technology, which is undisputed, if...
Mike, I don't mean to interrupt, but if you can wrap it up, we would appreciate it.
Okay. Given what was presented at the Planning Commission, there is no need for that particular condition, the spatial condition. There is a need to amend this ordinance or send it back for reconsideration to expand its application to the two districts that the funeral homes are located in.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Still Gordbost, and this isn't the main reason I came, but I thought, since I was having flashbacks of being on City Council, I might as well just have the whole evening taken up with that. Yeah, I think if I was in your shoes, I'd consider who your requesters are in terms of existing people rather than somebody new that wants to come in. But I understand that zoning has to be fair and across the board, but you've got two existing businesses that have provided very valuable and needed services, and now one of them, I don't know if the other has joined in, one of them wants to expand that service. I think if I was in your shoes, I think I would be very interested in a qualitative and quantitative approach to this versus a geographic approach. And I don't know enough about the science to go much beyond that. But I think that's what I'd be looking at if I was, had to evaluate this, is what's the science? What's the qualitative and quantitative approach to, does the standard get met? To be rather benign in current locations versus geographically having to, as a family, load up Uncle Harry, and if anybody's name's here is Harry, it just happens to be accidental, and go to the industrial park or do something. Somehow that just, I don't know, just doesn't seem right. So that'd be my advice to your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple questions. Glenn Dubrowick, it's not technically in the historic district, but it's right adjacent to that area, and of course, as I said earlier, we have a lot of historic structures that are outside the boundaries of our historic district. So my interest is what is the visual impact, because I'm not really sure, you said we wouldn't even know it was there. Is it within the building that you already have? Is that how that works?
Yeah. Glenn, you have to address the [inaudible 00:00:39].
I need to know the little, what does it look like? Is there like a big smoke stack? Is it within the Peterson's property that already exists?
And you're saying it is? Yes? Okay.
We're really not at that part yet, only because there is no application for us to consider, as we're still trying to consider the amendment to the zoning code, so...
Right. Okay. And we're not, at the point, what we're working on right now is the amendment and not specifically who it is.
Or what it looks like.
Or what it looks like and...
Right, right. And I did look at the homeless shelter amendment, but I didn't see this one, I didn't come in and like request it. So what is the proposal for the amendment? Because you're saying, did you say I-1, I-2 is the current ordinance?
That's what was proposed, that's what was sent up from the Planning Commission. They approved it to be zoned in...
I-1, I-2, so in the industrial sectors.
That's correct.
And they're looking at something, more on the Peterson's property, is at least what's reflected here. Okay. And my question is, if it did get to that point of going to the Peterson's property, whether or not visually you would see anything other than the current Peterson's building or the garage back behind? But it sounded like he was saying no. Is that a question for you guys? Can I ask him that?
Your own time, please.
Yeah, not here, though, Glenn.
Yeah? Because that would make a difference in, you know, as far as this is a public hearing for this issue, and yet I'm not...
No, you don't, yeah, we don't have the specifics, nor should we have the specifics. We're trying to determine as a generic use, a crematorium, does it belong in this district? Doesn't matter what it looks like or what the equipment is or anything else, it's, should a crematorium as a use be allowed in this district or in another district?
Okay. Well, from that perspective, two issues. One, of course, are the health concerns, and I know nothing of that side of it, and they're obviously speaking to that issue, the folks that have already gotten up. So I wouldn't know any of that. But the other question and concern is always, in a residential district, what is the impact to that district? So if you're going to have a big smoke stack, there'd be a resounding no. You know, if it was some big visual issue and a big block building or something popped up there, that would be an issue for people in the residential sector, what's putting like something that sounds like it belongs industrial, but, you know, part of that is the visual impact, too. So health is one and visual is the other. So I would ask both of those to be considered when it apparently gets to that point.
I'm sure they wouldn't want a smoke stack, you know...
I hope not.
Maybe I want to... Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and we'll start the conversation here.
I guess, what were the concerns of the Planning Commission to, you know, the main issues that made them decide this should be in the industrial area only? Well, the biggest reason, well, there's three reasons. Health and safety is one, and that relates back to the spatial separation of 300 feet. There are some, like state, Connecticut, for instance, won't allow a city to consider anything closer than 500 feet. The applicant's own consultant said that they can't be closer than 1,000 feet to a school, and was not able to tell us why you would have to be 1,000 feet from a school. I imagine there's a reason for that. And all the work that we've done, we probably looked at 30 different communities at least to look for any kind of standard way, or that other people who have been through this for longer periods of time have dealt with the issue. And quite frankly, although there is no standard, one thing that was always reoccurring was a spatial separation, and that spatial separation was anywhere from 300 to 1,000 feet. And so, right now, what we're proposing is the very, on the low end of that separation distance, so I think we're probably on the liberal end of that. I don't think that by and large, communities across the nation have bought into the zero impact portrayal of medical impacts or health impacts that they're saying aren't there. The evidence seems to contradict that at some level. So based on all the work that we did, we felt that, from a health standpoint, from a land use compatibility standpoint, from a property value standpoint, all those areas, that this was the way to go.
So you did your research, and you looked at areas that are using the same technology that's being proposed now?
Probably not. We looked at, we looked at, we looked at cities across the state, we looked at cities across the nation, and we looked at cities across the globe. They all probably had, somehow had very good technology, probably some maybe not so good technology, but whatever the case, we looked at all different scenarios, and this is what came back.
Is there a way to zone this so that you're, you know, that you'd be able to permit it with a certain type of technology only?
And you created a standard, is it being...
Well, I don't think the Planning Commission felt that beyond just the health standpoint, did it fit from a land use compatibility standpoint. So it's not just that one thing, if you get over this one hurdle, you're okay, it's the other hurdles you have to get over as well.
And I did ask that question on the Planning Commission, if, you know, if we were looking at it, because the technology that they're investing in is the best technology that's out there. But what we were tasked to do was thinking about the zoning of crematoriums, any crematoriums, not just what the Meyerins are trying to do, but somebody else could decide to come to Cadillac and want to open a crematorium, and maybe they don't want to invest the money that the Meyerins are investing. So that was part of our discussion, that we were asked to look at it from a generic perspective. Did I say that correctly?
Right.
So it isn't...
By doing that, then you're limiting their ability to get to...
We understood that.
And I have to say, maybe loads of Uncle Harry or Grandma, when my mother-in-law passed away down in Chelsea, the funeral director came and picked her up from where she was, and the crematorium was not, was outside of town. It was not, like downtown. And it really wasn't, it wasn't an inconvenience. I mean...
No, but I think this whole thing is changing. But it's, you know, and that's what I would like us to think about. It doesn't have to be, you know, 20 miles out of town, or it doesn't have to be in the industrial park. If there is no health concern and there's no emissions, there's, what do we say, discernible odor, you know, that would be a tough one to measure. Some of us have stronger scents of smell than others, but, you know, I mean, if you meet all the certain criteria and you're not putting up a building with a big smoke stack, then why not? I mean, I think we need to be able to get over that. It's a cultural thing, that this can happen here and it might be the right place to do it. And if people are actually wanting to go to the facility now, instead of having, you know, a third party pick Harry up and take him down the road and bring him back in a box, you know, I think things are shifting. And we need to think about that as we move forward with this. And I liked the other comment about, my gosh, we've had the same two funeral homes in town for 15 years, and, you know, it seems like we should be able to do something to help those businesses stay here and move forward with the way that their business is moving forward.
Well, as part of the discussion on the Planning Commission, too, it was, you know, they all agreed that this is a wonderful service to bring to the community. And when we talked about the industrial park, you know, I think that there was some concern about, you know, the whole vision of the smoke stack and the factory, but what was actually talked about was the fact that there are some nice facilities out just off of 13th Street in our industrial park. Street in our industrial park that could serve as a parlor, if you will, if the family wanted to go there. I mean, I felt like the planning commission did a tremendous job of researching, and there was a lot of thoughtful discussion about the really good information that was provided to the planning commission. I mean, the manufacturer of the equipment came in to talk, uh, the family talked, but again, the planning commission was tasked with coming up with something that was not specific to just the applicants.
You can't make ordinance to accommodate your local business to then do a project? Probably figure, again. I totally agree with that. That's why I was a little disappointed with the way the whole last conversation went, because it seemed to be all about new home shelter and not that actual ordinance, but...
Well, I don't know. So, so the planning commission didn't, not want it in the community, they believe that it's a great thing to bring to the community, but they felt like they were most comfortable with it being in the I-1, I-2, and it was unanimous.
It was, it was unanimous, and, um, it's also my understanding that there was some conversation regarding the very high standard of equipment that has been discussed by the Meyering family, that they're looking at investing in for their, uh, for the, for this operation here in town. And I don't want to put words in the mouth as the planning commissioners per se, but it's my understanding that the conversation went around where, while there was acknowledgement that, uh, the standard of the equipment that's being, uh, being looked at to serve Cadillac in this specific instance would be at the very high end and, and be, you know, emission-free and, and whatnot, that we don't have the ability of ensuring that when we open up this use, it could, we could enforce the, that same high standard on every other or any other user that potentially would go in there. But as I even say that, similar to the conversation that we had earlier with respect to the homeless shelters, you have to ask, well, how many, how many other crematoriums are all of a sudden going to pop up into, into the community? So, I mean, it is a tough conversation that the planning commission had, and a tough conversation that the city council had. And I realize I'm not making that conversation any easier, I'm just trying to explain how it was done in a manner of generalities, not focusing on any specific, uh, you know, institution of Cadillac or not, just the general topic itself of the specific use and how to best try to accommodate for that use. I, I know.
And your job was to zone for it.
And your job was to zone for it. I leaned over, uh, whispered to the city attorneys there a couple of moments ago about, about creating those standards, and, you know, it's very difficult to do. I'm not sure if it's impossible. Likely not something that you would be able to approve at this moment if we were gonna look at that pathway where you're creating a, a, you know, an equipment standard, but you were gonna comment on that, Mike, at all?
No, I think, you know, I think this is the same discussion we had as part of the last item, which is where do you think, where, where did the planning commission think this use belongs? They obviously think it belongs in the I-1 and I-2 zoning district. City's job is to, the council's job is to determine whether you're gonna follow their recommendation or not. It's as simple as that. I mean, there are standards, obviously, that will apply, same way as we discussed with the last one. I don't think the city can compel the purchase or installation of specific equipment, um, and I think that it's likely the MDEQ that's gonna issue any clear, uh, clean air permits, so I'm not sure you have jurisdiction over that aspect of it either. Um, so I think, I think with the, I wasn't involved necessarily with the planning, um, commission discussions per se, but, you know, I think they were looking at the general and broad scope of things, which is where do you allow this use? Where is it best situated for the city? City council is free to disagree with that, um, but, you know, we run into the same problem we had with the last one, which is, you know, if, if you're going to make changes, then we should probably do something different with it, and, you know, I, I'm not a big fan of making the decisions at the time, unless you wanna, like, for instance, if you wanted to say, well, it belongs in the I-1, the I-2, and, and the OS-2 district. The same standards could apply, we'd have to redraft some of this stuff, but, um, but ultimately, it's city council's to say it.
Well, and I, again, I would just remind everybody that on this particular topic, the planning commission put together a special, um, a smaller group that did research and worked outside of the planning commission meeting to make sure that we were knowledgeable and comfortable with what they were talking about. So I feel like this one is a little bit different than the conversation we had before, because I feel like we did more, more research on the front end of it.
There is an issue too that we haven't yet discussed, and I'm not sure, um, because it's really more applicant appropriate than anything else, but right now, at least, uh, my review of the state law would prohibit the funeral home from owning a crematorium either directly or indirectly, which may be an issue come application time, or maybe an issue for the legislature, but there is that issue that's out there as well.
It frankly surprises me that they only came up with industrial park for the zone, or the district, that they wouldn't consider OS-2. Or one of the other business districts.
But, um, I'm gonna make the motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance 2016-13, amending the zoning ordinance regarding crematoriums.
Support.
Call it, please.
Um, council member Shippers?
Yes.
Council member Spelman?
No.
Council member Wolfile? Council member Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
No.
Uh, motion passes.
There.
And members of the city council.
Okay.
Okay, um, if I could just pass on services, but there's a. Here, here, a quick second. Uh, we are nearing, uh, the very end of our.
Yep, we have ordinances and, oh no, we have the city manager's report.
Uh, one, uh, quick item on the city manager's report. If I could direct everybody's attention to the handout, um, that was left at your desk. It's a slight update to the version that was in your concept packet regarding the proposed 2017 council meeting schedule. Uh, in short, it's being proposed that the January 2nd council meeting is canceled, city offices are closed, in fact, that, uh, for the New Year's holiday. Uh, further, it's also being recommended that the, uh, January 16th council meeting actually be scheduled to the January 17th council meeting, uh, in recognition of, uh, Martin Luther King Day, uh, and we are also closed on the 16th as well. Uh, we're also recommending that on Monday, July 3rd, uh, we do not hold that council meeting date, uh, it is the day before the July 4th holiday. Uh, we're also requesting a rescheduling of the Monday, September 4th, uh, which is the Labor Day, um, holiday, uh, council meeting to Tuesday, September 5th. Uh, and then the last recommendation is with respect to the election day, uh, scheduled for November 6th, and that we cancel that meeting accordingly. As we've done in the past, if we need to call it special meetings, certainly we have special meetings that are recommended accordingly. Uh, additionally, if there are other elections that get scheduled, we would come forward in due time when we are even aware of them, bring them forward for council to consider.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2017 council meeting schedule as presented.
Support. Council member Spelman?
Yes.
Council member Wolfile?
Yes.
Council member Meinhart?
Yes.
Council member Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, under introduction of ordinances and resolutions, before you this evening, uh, we are looking at setting a public hearing for January 17th, 2017. This is with respect to an ordinance, uh, that will approve an easement for electric facilities. Uh, we'll have a, a map indicating the location of the easement that you can show as a part of the public hearing on the 17th. Uh, this is somewhat exciting news, uh, that we're able to bring this forward to you. This is all in relationship to the ability for the city to eliminate additional above-ground utility poles in the vicinity of the Rotary and Arts Pavilion, uh, the after 26 Ambus Facility and the future market location.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to approve easement for electric facilities and set a public hearing for January 17th, 2017.
Support. Council member Wolfile?
Yes.
Council member Meinhart?
Yes.
Council member Shippers?
Yes.
Council member Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Okay.
This time I'll open the floor for, um, public comment. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and does anybody have anything for good of the order this evening?
Mayor Filkins, I'd like to show, uh, the city council, if you have not seen this yet in the, in the flesh, uh, uh, this is a certificate of special recognition, uh, that the city received, uh, from US Congressman John Molinar, in recognition of the plaza at Cadillac Commons and a lot of the work that's going on, uh, down there. Uh, I just wanted to bring it, uh, and have everyone get a chance to take a look at it. So we will find a place to put it, and, uh, likely frame it as well, so.
Wonderful. I thought.
I have a couple of things. Um, the first one is a question about, um, maybe a response for us related to Jack Bond's request at the last two meetings during public comment, wondering where his, what's the status of his request for the hot dog stand is. Would you be able to address that with him in the near future?
Yes.
And then I also wanted to say that I really appreciated the police awards. Um, that was, it was long and a long meeting, but it was really nice, and it was very nice for everybody else to see that as well. And I, I was very humbled by it, I felt like there are heroes among us, and it was so nice to be able to, to honor them and to celebrate that. So I really appreciate that, being on the agenda and, um, Todd bringing that forward, Chief Gollman bringing that forward. And it's a great time of year to reflect on our achievements, really, so, thank you. And then in the same vein, I guess, you know, I couldn't help but think when we were having all of the public discussion about our, of the homeless shelters, how lucky we are that we have them, and that we have the luxury of usually having enough beds for both the homeless men and the homeless women and the homeless families, especially this time of year when it's so cold outside, so, um, I think we're just, I'm grateful that we have them in our community.
Well, I was gonna go in the same direction as you, I just wanted to publicly, even though they're all gone now, take the moment to congratulate all the officers that were recognized tonight. Uh, I think it pays tribute to the, the quality of personnel we have that work here within the city Cadillac, you know, and the good job that has been done in the past, uh, hiring the kind of personnel that we do have here, and, you know, we have those same kind of, even though they didn't have a recognition ceremony tonight, you know, we've got that down in the fire department as well. And so we're lucky to have the people that we do to protect us every day. And other than that, I guess we don't have another meeting until after the holidays, right? So Merry Christmas to everyone.
I'd just like to say, um, that we do appreciate the first responders, and it was a good ceremony today, and everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Um, I would like to, um, shout out to Ken Payne and the city staff that worked so hard over the last week, um, getting the ice skating rink set up in sub-zero weather and, um, changing out our lights so that we could do that ceremony this afternoon. Um, they approached their work, um, for the city with so much dedication, and, um, you can just tell how much they care about the city of Cadillac, so, I wanted to say that. So now we have to go into.
Can I say something quick?
Oh, yes, you didn't.
I'd just like to extend that to all the staff, that I know how hard everybody works, and, you know, when, when our staff, their expertise brings us something, and then we go questioning and throwing it back and saying we need more stuff, I know how difficult that must be, and I appreciate that, but on the same token, one of the best parts of, of living in community and in small towns is that you can walk into a meeting fully convinced of one thing and hear all kinds of information and start questioning and realizing we need more information. So I appreciate that, and, and staff, and I know it's always a drag when we throw stuff back and see, but we love you and the work that you do.
With all the love, John.
Okay. With that, we need to, um, go to.
Yeah, we have just a, a quick one item tonight, if I may read it. A request is to adjourn the process to the consult with the city attorney, uh, in, uh, connection with the fairness of the Cadillac at all case number one, calling 15-CB-00680-RJJ, the discussion of which in public would have a detrimental financial effect on the city's trial for settlement strategy.
Motion to adjourn the close motion for the purposes that the city manager just, just gave to us.
Support. Okay. Um, council member Meinhart?
Yes.
Council member Shippers?
Yes.
Council member Spelman?
Yes.
Uh, council member Wolfile?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Okay, much curious.
Hey, same to you.
We gotta go in the car.
Thank you for the time, man.
At least they're not the 11 o'clock.